I'm glad you learned how to walk, Chase. Definitely stay sober, you're a few more minutes, Mayor, a few more minutes.
Alright, bring the order, uh, the council meeting dated five for nineteen eighty-six. Um, today's meeting is obviously gonna be my last, the election results are in. Um, so basically how it's gonna go is I'm going to give a spiel. Um, pass the, uh, the chair over to the winner, announce the winner, and then they can run the meeting. Um, how they see fit, so, um, but lastly, I just wanted to say. Um, I just wanted to say how grateful I was, how grateful I am for the opportunity to, to, uh, run the city. Um, you guys put a lot of trust in me, and I'll, I'll never forget it. Um, I've been asked about, over the last couple of weeks. Like, what did I hope to achieve, what do I think I did well, and all those things? Um, and to be honest, I think the only, the only real thing that I did well was I allowed. I allowed the people to speak through me as I was a representative of the people, I feel like I, at, at the end of the day, I represented you guys. Um, so as my, as my term ends, um, what I would tell the oncoming mayor and the council. Um, is that, is don't be afraid, um, to figure out ways to tell people yes. I was told no this whole time, when I became mayor, that I'd be telling people no. And I tried my hardest not to tell people no, I tried to figure out a way to tell people yes. Um, and I hope that you guys will carry on. Carry on that, um, and lastly, I would say, the Chief Justice will tell you all day that you guys don't have any power, and that's not true. You, as representatives of the people, wield the power of the people. And there is, and there has been precedents where the people overturn the Chief Justice's decisions. So, don't let anyone tell you, including the Chief Justice, or the AG, or anyone else, no offense to the AG or Chief Justice. But don't let anyone tell you that something can't be done. You guys are supposed to press the judiciary. You're supposed to pass laws and make the judiciary question whether or not they hold validity to the Constitution, not the other way around. So that's what I would say to you guys. Um, yeah, and then lastly, you know, I really enjoyed, uh, eight months in office. It's a long eight months, but I'm, I'm glad I get to pass the gavel to someone else. Um, and on that note, I don't wanna keep going down this road right now, but, um, so I'll go ahead and announce the winner. Um, and everybody's been waiting on, so, and this was a very, very close election, so, um. For the winner and the loser, it was, it was, it was close beyond belief. So, but with that, uh, that note, I'd like to announce that, um, that Banner did win the race. Five smallest of margins. Um, I don't see, is Banner in the, uh, audience today?
He's not here.
Oh.
Nope.
Um, well, alright, alright, well, that's unforeseen, I don't know why he'd be here, but. Um, well, with that, that, with that, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna continue speaking, I'm gonna let the council speak, um, about the news. Um, any council members like to go forth, and, and Smokey, you ran a good race, um, I honestly, I just think it's a matter of time.
Have you guys seen Better Fox today?
If you're, if you're willing to do it, I'm sure the seat will be open.
Nope, I haven't been here too long, so.
And like I said, it was a really close, it was a really close race, um, it was a nail biter, so to speak. Um, I'll be able to get the exact results for you in a little bit, but it was the smallest of margins.
Awesome, sounds great, thank you.
Um, yeah, so, any council members want to, uh, speak?
I'll go first.
Okay, okay, okay. I'll be back.
Councilman Adam Smokey, um, just in light of the campaign this week, I unfortunately haven't been able to draft up any legislation. Uh, to present for discussion this week. Um, I would just like to go on record and thank everybody who, uh, voted for me and, uh, take this opportunity to congratulate. Uh, newly elected Mayor Banner Fox.
Yeah, if, if he, um, if he holds true to his word as making you Deputy Mayor, will you accept it?
Sorry, I guess I shouldn't.
Oh, we have arrived, sorry.
Oh.
He's a little late.
There's the new mayor.
Um, it is certainly something that I would have to consider, yes, I don't, I don't want to commit to anything right now, but we'll see.
Alright, well, where'd you find him, was he hiding in his office?
Congratulations Banner.
I drug him out here, that's so, I swear to God.
So, um, congratulations Banner, you won the election, you are the new mayor. So. There hasn't been a transfer of power in the state, so I'm just going to transfer power to you, you run, uh, the meeting, and, uh. I will sit down like a normal citizen, congratulations, by the way, hell of a campaign. Yeah, that's fine, congratulations.
Uh, sir, leave the gavel behind, sir, you can't take that with you.
Alright, I, I left it up there, trust me.
You did amazing, Chase.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna sit with the cool kids, okay.
How you doing, man?
I'm doing well.
Yell Banner.
Banner, Banner, gotta speak up.
Yell Banner.
Okay, hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, today, Saturday, May fourth, nineteen eighty-six. Um, may City Council be in order. Uh, council members, would anybody want to start the pledge?
Go Pollard.
Oh, wait, which flag are?
Yeah, which flag we looking at?
Which flag?
American one.
Probably the one, one that you can see from your seat.
Any American one will do. I basically look like a flag.
Just turn around, Banner, he looks, looks better for facing that one.
Okay, are we gonna start?
Yes, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, I can't say that word.
And justice for all.
Hell, yeah.
We're supposed to do a thumbs up, too?
Yep, thumbs up for America, everybody.
Thumbs, thumbs up for America.
Oh, fuck.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Alright, ma'am, council, is there anything you'd like to bring to order today? And again, thank you, Ms. Morris, for that lovely rendition of The Pledge.
I was raised in the South, we, we live and breathe America, um. I would like to bring up that we were tabling until a new mayor was elected. Filling a seat left by the late Sandra Warren.
Okay, and were there any council members, because it was also council member election to fill the other. Seats that were available as of today, correct?
Nobody ran in, in them, but yes. So we can, we would have to go through the same seating process that we did before.
Seating, okay.
Which we didn't have people that would come up, and you, I think part of your, uh, platform was you wanted to make sure that people. Um, were in the city for a while, yes, yes, so, yeah.
Okay, so, um. I'd suggest, uh. Do we have any members here that would wish to sit on City Council? Obviously, if you have felonies, you are not able to, um, please raise your hand.
Raise your hand, fellas, raise your shot, you got this.
Okay, um, if you are looking to, um, sit on City Council, could you please come to the podium? Address the council and state your platform. Sir?
Hello, my name is Robert Daynab. And, uh, I'm a former councilman, who, uh. I, everyone knows that, in here, what the circumstances are, um, the problem is, I would love to, uh, continue helping to serve. But at the moment, uh, every other Saturday, I have to be out of state, working on Vagina Worldwide. So, that would mean I could only give half the time to the council, but when I can be here every other week, I would be more than happy to sit on the council. To, to, uh, to help and, and so such time that, uh, I can't anymore.
Okay, um, Mr. Daynab, may I ask a question? Would you be prepared to name a proxy for council meetings that you would not be able to attend?
Uh, hmm, good question.
Someone to, you know, just vote for you.
I couldn't volunteer anyone, um, I would say, uh, uh, maybe, uh, Harmony would be my, uh, suggestion.
Okay.
If she, if she's up for it, she's always here every meeting. She, she, she makes very logical and makes an excellent arguments, and I would, you know. No one, uh, no one better in my mind than her.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jade, can you speak up so I can hear you? Would you be willing to be a stand-in proxy for Mr. Daynab on meetings he would not be able to attend? Can she not hear me?
Can you?
She's speaking to you, but she needs to, just a little bit louder.
Better?
I don't know, I'm in the same seat.
You gotta tell me, I don't, just.
Can you hear her, Banner?
So, I, I cannot hear you.
Harmony, can you move forward, Harmony?
Let's play, no, you can't.
I can't, I don't wanna move the tripod.
Here, I, I gotta, I gotta.
You're gonna ruin my footage, I don't wanna move the tripod.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it has to stay in one spot.
What do you, what do you say, do you wanna hold his, his seat while he, uh, if he's not here on those other days, is that what, is that what's being stated?
No, he, she does not need to hold the seat, she would need to voice his vote on, um.
Can you voice his vote on the days that he can't be here every other Saturday?
Sure, I can do that for him, sure.
She said sure she could do that.
Okay, yay.
Wait, did she say that?
I don't think she said it.
She said that, she didn't say it.
I said it, I said it.
As a former councilman, I didn't think I would lie.
I, I can't.
I, I am, I am appalled to think he would lie.
I can.
That's something a liar would say.
Yeah.
Um, officers, could you please relay, um, openly and honestly what, huh, Mr. Jade is saying?
Oh, my God.
Alright, I wasn't listening.
Give you all this counsel, I'm gonna have so much fun with you.
I said I can proxy for Robert if he needs a proxy, since I'm here.
She can proxy for Robert if he needs somebody to proxy for.
That's crazy.
That thing, those words.
Okay, thank you very much, council, how would you feel for Robert Daynab? As, um, sitting councilperson, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay?
It looked like someone else wanted to put their.
We have several seats open.
We have several seats open.
Yeah, yeah, come on up, people, come on up.
Yay, 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 yay.
Okay, so the ayes have it, Mr. Daynab, congratulations, you are now sitting coun-, um, councilmember, if you'll please take your seat.
Welcome back, sir.
Sir, please step forward.
Hi, Robert.
And please state your name.
Hello, everybody, I'm David Turnbill.
And what would you, be your platform if you were to run for City Council, sir?
Well, if I was able to get on City Council, I would do everything in my power to give power back to the people. Let them have a little bit more of a say on, you know. I would shoot for them to have a little more say on, uh, voting for laws and, uh, just votes in general.
Okay, um, you know that you're, it would be the representative of the people and the vote would then come to you. From what they vote on, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then that's what you would put up to City Council, 'cause that's what, um, representatives are supposed to be doing as of now, I.
Yes.
Stand how it needs to be given back, it should have been.
Well, you know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, and you have no felony convictions, correct, sir?
No.
Okay, um. Alright, uh, councilmembers, um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Mr. Daynab?
That was beautiful, that was almost like a song.
Hey, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was whispering, yeah, I said aye.
Okay, sir, um, the council has appointed you as a, uh, representative by majority vote, you could please take a seat.
Yay, David.
Congratulations, David.
In the, in the, um, jury vote.
Would I be able to make a quick comment?
Any other members that wish to run for council at this time present?
Harmony wants to make a quick comment.
Okay.
I don't know if Dr. Gilbert knows, but his term ran up this past election, he's not an active councilmember.
No. Can you hear?
Scandalous.
No.
Can someone relay that?
Yep, uh, Dr. Gilbert's term ran up. Savannah, you should, you should try to be on City Council, I think it'd be amazing. Respectfully, no, thank you. Okay.
I think that means he doesn't get a vote.
Correct, Harmony, he doesn't get a vote?
No, it, um, Robert, Gilbert, Timothy, and Dr. Katz's seats ran up the past election.
And mine.
Last day on City Council?
Yep, his ran up last.
Last Saturday would have been the last one.
Last Saturday was his last one.
Okay.
Okay, then I guess.
Would you like to run for City Council?
They got lots of space for you back here.
Yeah, yeah, just stay where you are, just stay right there. Yeah, I, I can run again, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor of, um, Gilbert Brown, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, Gilbert Brown is reappointed to City Council. So we need two more, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Any other members of the community present wish to run for City Council?
Oh, I thought Tim was gonna come up here.
Yeah.
Well, apparently my word's not trusted, so I'm gonna abstain.
Get up there, you got this.
Actually, Williams, uh, I'm not running for City Council, I'm not, I did wanna say one thing, I am deeply concerned. Uh, that we are appointing so many people that were not voted in by the people. Um, even though we are trying to do a stopgap thing, maybe the people don't want a City Council, maybe that's what the people want, they don't want that. And if you guys are interested in actually running, you guys should put your name on a damn ballot, I don't know.
Right.
But anyway, I'm just deeply concerned that we're just going through appointments after appointments, and the will of the people aren't gonna be done, except by you, sir, you're, the people love you, but other than that. That's all I gotta say, just comment.
Should we just dissolve the City Council, is that what you're saying? Dissolve it and let us run again, is that what you're saying?
I mean, your word's not mine, madam.
No, I, I am re-.
Fresh election?
Fresh election.
I mean, I'm just saying that we have a mostly appointed City Council, um, and it's great that you guys are interested in it, awesome, you know, and you were appointed earlier on, so was Ms. King. Um, and, uh, Smokey was also, uh, appointed in there, and I, I think you guys have been doing great. Um, and I know it's needs must sometimes in the city, I get that, I do. Um, but I just get concerned for the will of the people, that's all, because not a single person in here voted for any one of them. We voted for, well, some of us voted for, uh, Mr. Banner Fox, but not a single one of them.
Okay, can I ask a question, sir, would this make you feel better? What if we did, okay, we have citizens here right now, right? So what if we just filled Ms. Sandra's spot? Because that one needed to be filled, just filled her spot, and we had those people who are. We had those people who are sitting in this courtroom right now.
Oh, you guys do whatever you want, anyway, just a comment.
No, I'm just saying, if you want it to be the will of the people, we could make it the will of the people.
I mean, that's up to you guys, again, like, I'm just, um, just asking questions, just asking questions.
How, how many people were appointed, and how many people were, like, you said it just a minute ago, can you go over those numbers again?
So far, with the two that were appointed today, sir.
I think that's a great idea.
Six were appointed? Not just today, I mean, altogether, without, who, who went to an actual election, and then who just got appointed?
Okay, um, Gilbert Brown, well, no, he went through, okay. So Gilbert Brown, Robert Daynab have been through an election, and that, now they were just reappointed. Um, pretty sure everybody up there, else up there has been appointed.
Yes, that is correct. And the reason for that, though, was because we never held an election following.
The blackout.
The blackout. Which, in full disclosure, I was fully into. Yeah, I was, I, can I motion for a special election?
All members of council in favor of a special election?
Banner, why would they be in favor of giving up their seat?
Well, if they wanna do what's right for the people, they would be glad to.
Yes.
Representatives of the people, as they said.
And I called for it.
It's a reflection of why they're really up there.
Oh, we're the people. Why?
Um, as no member, um, currently in the, in any elec-, recent election has been duly elected.
Then they don't represent us.
Yeah, I, I get what, what you guys are saying, you know, and, and listen, I'm just, I'm just thinking about my situation at this point, I'm sorry, just.
So you're saying you're just thinking about your situation?
Oh.
Build a new council, change my name, Mayor.
Because, hear me out, and, and I, that's why I totally agree with you. I don't think it's fair to have a part-time councilman. So that's why I wasn't gonna run, so, you know. To me, I, I mean, and listen, you guys do what you want, I, I have no problems if you wanna do an election. But, you know, if, I'm not really gonna run again because I don't think it's fair for you guys, so yes, I am acting like that.
Hey, I, I love this stance as I'm yelling from the backseat over there, um, and no disrespect to any of the councilmembers that just got a seat or anything like that, this is just. Gilbert and you, Daynab, you ran elections, elections happened, you earned your seats, and I understand your terms are ended, and you re, reran, which is. Hon- honestly, it's common practice. But for the seats that happened during the blackout, and these seats that we're appointing right now, not a single election, not a single campaign was ran. You should campaign to get the people behind you, if you want to represent everybody over there, sitting down. You should at least run a full election and earn your seat, even if it's just you running, we at least know your platform and know where to stand, and know who we can come to. That's what we're saying, so I think you should all do the right thing on the motion that he had. And run a special election, if you are truly for the people, the people will vote you in, and it will happen. If you are not, continue to sit down and be a sham of a council, that's all I have to say. And stop thinking by yourself.
This is amazing.
Yeah, you're not, you're not, you're not disagreeing, I'm just. Everybody has City Council.
Yeah, I'm counsel.
Well, wait a minute, don't we get that, wait a minute, don't we get a get an opportunity to respond? Absolutely, absolutely, but, um, I want to, um, put on the floor, this, this is all going forward. As of now, for a ta-, um, a motion to run an election over the next week. To fill City Council by, um, twelve AM, one week from today.
Well, yeah, but, I still get to reply to him still, though, correct, before you go to this vote, I haven't.
Yes, yes, I'm just labeling what this is going to be, um, now, all, all about, as we didn't have anything formally down. Now, this is for a special election from seven days from now, and how the council will now reply to, wait one moment, we have another. Citizen that would like to speak, yes, sir?
Yes, Chase Reform, Mayor, Mayor, so.
But I haven't even begun to speak to him yet, got to reply to him yet.
Let me, let's, let me say this, well, well, I take it, I'm a little bit, I'm a, you know, I appointed some of these people. I just wanted to remember, uh, to remind the council mayor, and to inform the public, that all appointments were in, in, were constitutionally grounded. They were ruled on the eight, by the AG, so any, any discrepancy, obviously, in time, Gilbert is willing to, to rectify that situation. Uh, but anything else, given that, is all constitutional. Um, now, you can sit here and say that it's their sham, they're not, they're this, that, and that, but at the end of the day, it's all constitutionally sound, and it was. Uh, ruled on by the judiciary, so anything you guys decide to do, which you guys have the power to do, is up to you guys, um, and, uh. The people can have their own opinion on everything, you can't please everybody, anyways, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir, before you leave.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned that this was all, um, ruled on by the AG, and he approved of this when you appointed the members?
Well, the, yeah, the appointments and all of that were constitutionally sound.
Okay, um, now, I'm, I'm still confused why he brought it up now.
Who, not the AG, the, well, that's, that's up to the AG, I'm just thinking that the, 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 the attorney, yeah, sorry, the Chief Justice ruled on it, excuse me. Ruled on it last week, I said AG, but the Chief Justice ruled on the appointments, that's all I'm saying, so. And you guys have the power within the Constitution to do what you guys see fit, uh, in that, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Response on me, Ashley.
Okay, Robert, would you like to respond to Mr. Bradford?
Just, just sit on the outside.
Yeah, Mr. Bradford, I, I, first off, I, I, I agree with you, that you made excellent point, excellent argument, I agree with everything you said. Where did you not hear where I said, go ahead and have the election, and I, you know, I have no problem with that. Where, so why would you assume the entire council is against it?
Because when he called all in favor, nobody said a word.
No.
That's why I would believe you're not in favor of it. I didn't, it's, it wasn't loud enough, if not, I'm, that's the only other issue.
Apparently it wasn't loud enough, 'cause I did hear Councilwoman King, I did hear, um, Councilwoman, uh. Ms. Morris, and I can't be sure, but I'm pretty sure I also heard, um, Councilman, um, Smokey. Say that they were in favor of.
I raised the motion myself.
And, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't think I shouted out, 'cause I thought you were, still had something to say, 'cause you didn't call for a ayes or anything like that, so.
And yes, I'm not gonna vote against a motion that I'm raising.
Mr. Turnbull, um, would you also be in favor?
Yes, I was gonna say when I had a, uh, a second, when there was a break, then if I do have a vote, I would also vote yes for that.
Okay, and Mr. Daynab, uh, as you previously said to them, you are in favor of an elec-, a special election for next week?
Well, yes, without a doubt I am.
Okay, so the council is unanimous on this?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So the council is unanimous on this?
Yes.
Aye.
I mean, I ain't gaining anything except losing hours and, on a Saturday night here right now.
Understand, um, ma'am, did you have something you wanted to come up to the podium and share?
No, you resolved the question that I had.
Okay. So, as of. So, as of now, by the council's unanimous decision. Um, for, as of today, I guess, starts the campaigning. For the sitting members to be elected, duly elected to council. For, uh, what would the date?
I do now have a question. You said election for the sitting members, what about other people? Who are in the audience or may not be here today?
It's an open election.
Um, all you would have to do is send a letter to city stating your intent to run and. Show that you have no felon, or you will be vetted to seem that you have no felonies on your record. And you are more than able to run, anybody in the state without felonies is more than able to run during the special election. For. Apparently all seats.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And at this time, uh, we will stop appointments as.
You, Miss Harmony?
They seem to be frowned on, and we will run an election for the full city council. Please step up, sir, if you'd like to speak, officer.
I speak on behalf of, uh, Miss Harmony up here.
I wanted to know what would be the win-lose criteria, because right now there's eight seats, so if all six ran, wouldn't they just all be appointed?
Yes, Miss Harmony, Jay Lowry, would you like to, um?
Hold on, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point it out for you guys. Um, Lawrence Gilright, Deputy of the Sheriff's Department, I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, Miss Harmony. We were wondering about, uh, the win or lose criteria, cuz since there are basically eight seats to be filled, if all six of them ran up. Would it mean that they automatically win anyhow in that sense? So, wha- what is the key point there? When are we not gonna say, settle someone and when is someone actually appointed?
The, okay, so what will happen is all seats are open. They are sitting in until the election is brought. If they, if they also send in letters to be, um, elected. And then the top six, um, counts shall be, um, set. Does that clarify?
That still, uh, leaves, open up the question, uh, then why are we gonna do? Well, why are we gonna do if, uh, there are six and you pick the top six anyway? I mean, is that really the voice of the people then?
At least then the people have voted.
Stagger the elections with only three seats. At a time. Fill three, have all six run, s- fill three, if they lost, they cannot run the next three seats that need to fill. If it's just the same people, we're not really doing anything but just having them go back up there. It's, it makes no sense.
Well, this also gives people in general the time to know that city council election is happening. And send their names in, and that, the top votes would be seated.
How long are you gonna give the election?
A week, sir. Which, um, I'm pretty sure due to the.
How long do the candidates have to declare that they're running for elects, for the, the, the election?
Like, three days or something like that.
Yeah, like two days.
Yes, we would have to do, um, a m- a m- maximum of four days, a minimum of two.
Yeah, that's, that's it, okay.
I would say do it two weeks, give people time, let people know, let them campaign. At least for this first election, Mr. Mayor. This first reelection. For the elections. They don't, we don't need to fill, we don't need to fill all this, we don't need to fill all this seats right now.
For in favor and also an opposing one, that if people are basically for, against people, they will not be seated in council or in that place. Correct.
And the prior. We have no one actually submitting their names, that's why people were appointed in the first place. Um, we need a council for next meeting on Saturday. That is why we're using the urgency of one week. And.
But then.
Giving it open to the entirety of the city to run if they so feel fit. With pro- um, knowledge that will be posted, I'm quite sure, in the news tomorrow. When the paper is released and this council meeting is transcribed. Giving the people, um, due availability to know that these seats are open. And the elections are. Going for them to apply to be a council member.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak, please?
Please.
Um, Polly Morris, um, maybe or maybe not city councilwoman, um, I would just say that. Really, honestly, we probably could use two weeks for people to be prepared. Because quite honestly, I don't think anybody can put together a political campaign in three days. I, I just don't think it's possible, especially if they are not here currently and have any interest on being on the city council. And I do know that there were people that last city council. You know, the last time we were seated, apparently had issues and wanted to be able to run, and I say, just let them run. So give them two weeks. I mean, that's my proposal.
Those people haven't ran yet.
Uh, I, I said Smokey, but they didn't under, they didn't know that there was gonna be an election. I don't think.
Weasel News put out on April fourteenth in their April fourteenth issue that elections were coming into contact city hall.
And where are the elections?
Nobody ran.
There was no election, there was a mayor election, and now you're all sitting over here, you've been warded in by yourselves. You know, this, this new mayor over here, he's got the right of it, do an election, have people campaign yourselves.
Well, I'm not saying there shouldn't be an election, I'm saying we should give people two weeks. I'm saying we should give people two weeks to be able to decide whether they wanna run or not. And to try and get their campaigns together, because, you know, I, I don't believe that three days can get a decent campaign together. But, you know, maybe that's just me, I don't know.
Understood. An- any questions before we bring this matter to a vote? Um, to. How is the best way to put this? To hold off city council under the appointed seats until two weeks' time where. Um, a full-term election can be sought and ran.
Um, before you do that, I, I do have one question. And it was to the young lady who just spoke. Um, you know, you're right, you guys did not get an opportunity to vote for any of us. Uh, there were special circumstances under the first group, which I totally agree with and understand, getting to know. Um, I, once again, sitting in that seat over there before I came up here, was just a person wanting to help out. And, uh, I get one hundred percent your guys' want and desire to wanna have an election. And I agree with that one hundred percent. In fact, I also agree this should be two weeks. Um, the big problem here with, was, you keep on saying you didn't get an opportunity to vote, you didn't get an opportunity to vote because none of you. Had the courage to sign up.
Oh, 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 hold on, stop right there, none of you had the courage to sign up.
Well, we need, we needed to, too, so.
There we go.
Holding a one-off vote in a closed room where only a select number of people can arrive at what, based on what I've read. Is announced three hours before it takes place, is not democracy.
Hey, one, once again, I agree with you. I agree with what you're saying. I'm just trying to explain the context of the situation.
I understand, I don't know any of you, I have no hard feelings against any of you. But an election takes place over a period of time. There's a period of time in which people who wish to run in it can run for it, and if that's just you, that's fine. But then the rest of the populace votes, and those votes are tallied. And at least that way you can all sit there and make your laws and pass your bills, knowing that the people voted for you. So yes, do it in two weeks, or a month, or two months, or however long it takes to do it properly.
And, and if, in, if, if you wanna bring up that if. The, none of the, the councils either dissolved, dissolved, or the three original council members that were appointed during the blackout. Are, are the only council members, I'll vote for that.
I have no say here, I'm just speaking my mind, but there's no reason that you can't sit during the time period that you're also campaigning. Maybe there is constitutionally, I don't know, I haven't read the constitution. But, there's no reason to.
We were constitutionally seated, so, you know, I guess we could.
There's no reason to smash it with a hammer while you're running for reelection. Anyway, I've said my piece, I'll go sit.
Ms. King, would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
You have the floor.
Um, I'm more than willing to do a campaign, and I totally agree that it is a right that we should, you know, that it should be done. Um, and if I have to campaign while I'm talking right now, then sure. But, through the three of us that are, you know, were here during that time. Um, I feel like we have done a lot to prove ourselves around here and kind of have earned these seats. Um, hmm. We have, I mean, Mr. Smokey here was running for mayor, I mean, we're all here trying to move things here in the city, we're doing our best. We showed up whenever it was a really, really. You know, interesting time, and I'm just saying, like, you know, I will run again, but at the same time, if we need to stagger three and three, like y'all said, then. To keep it as it is.
If you win the election, then it just shows the people agree with you.
That's why I said, if this is me campaigning right now, then that's fine as well.
Let the people decide.
I, that, that's fine, I just giving an option about the three staggering situation like you had, was brought up, that, that's it.
If I may address the council.
Okay, go ahead, no, go ahead, sorry.
No, so just to be, let's just make a few things clear, okay? This is a representative democracy. You guys represent the people, the mayor represents the entire city, correct? That's how this works.
Ideally.
So, no, that, not, not ideally, that's, this is a representative democracy. You are here, you are voted in to represent regardless of the, and the means and methods you got here, which are all constitutionally sound. So if the mayor is elected, right, and the mayor makes a decision. That isn't in fact him speaking for the people, because the people have put him in office to make that decision. Which means everyone sitting on the council, everyone sitting on the council. Was appointed by somebody that was representing the city, that was voted in, which means your guys' seats are fine. If you guys wanna sit here and do whatever and think that you guys are not doing a job, and I'll say this, you guys did do a good job. The people I appointed, I appointed legally. As a representative in a representative democracy, to represent them. If you guys decide to do an election that's on you guys, in my opinion, constitutionally sound, you guys have a term limit. All the elections are, are written in the constitution on the order in which they are to go down, now, understanding that the blackout complicated things. But either way. You guys are representing the people in a representative democracy. If he so chooses as mayor to appoint any seats, he has that power, and the ju- judiciary already ruled on that. So, I'm just saying this, you guys understand, you don't have to do any of this, everything's constitutionally sound. If you wanna pe- uh, please the people and make everyone happy, that's on you guys. Either way, if you guys run an election and the same people sit up here, then you guys haven't done anything, you haven't changed anything, won't say you haven't done anything. If you want the people to elect you and to, to be okay with you, and to say you've done a good job, you guys are already up there to have the power to do it right now. And you guys are elected officials in a representative democracy. That's, that's all I'm gonna say about this. I'm gonna go leave now. You guys have a great day, I'm gonna go drink.
Oh, no, no.
Legally somewhere else, you guys have a great fucking day. Enjoy, have a great fucking day.
Have a good day, child. Well, and, we are up here because nobody else would stand up, I mean, I understand that.
Uh, not to make it personal or anything, get, get the, I'm saying, I'm sorry if I did come out taking something personal to you guys, I apologize for that. But, see, he's also one hundred percent correct. Via the constitution, um, last week, I proposed something that was against the constitution that. Nobody in this room had any objection to, cuz they all thought it would be beneficial. And we couldn't do it because it wasn't constitutional.
Try not to.
I didn't like it, I disagreed with it, but I abide by it.
Was it the vote?
That's his argument, yeah, but now the same argument is going the other way. It's something he makes a very good point about, but people don't like that, so they wanna change the constitution.
I know, I know.
So, that's, I understand both sides of this to the nth degree.
Wow.
Politics.
Okay, council, um, due to all the information given, the constitutionally, tutionality of your appointments. Being valid, are, would we like to rehold the vote for elections? Or would, and we will give the time period of two weeks? Or would you like to remain in your seats and use that time to show the people that you are working for them? Through legislation. Will this legislation have to go through ju- judicial approval?
It, probably.
Yes.
And I have no problem whatsoever voting for this.
Me as well.
Okay, so.
What are we voting for? I'm sorry. Which, which leg, what?
Okay, um, first of all, this isn't, there, there is no legislation here, this is a vote. Whether we will be voting for all council seats, either staggeredly or directly to fill said seats. Um, as, uh, the city was asking, due to appointments. To reset off and. You, um, just sitting in during that time of the election while you would be campaigning to run. Or if we will hold on the appointments that we already have. And, um, fill the next two seats via, I. Well, I guess so by appointment and then start elections on the staggered schedule as when your appointments run out.
If it's constitutional.
Those are both constitutional means, there is no need for judicial review on this issue. What we are voting on is what our next move is due to the opposition brought forth by the people of the ci- city.
Okay, so my choice is give up my seat and rerun for election, or stay in my seat and we will have sta- uh, staggered elections, correct?
Correct.
All right, well, you know, because people I respect out there in the, uh. Out there in the audience are, um, saying that they want us to have to run. I'm fine with that, I don't care, I mean, if somebody, if, if people actually wanna step up and actually run. I, more power to them, go ahead.
Okay, so all in favor of redoing the elections and standing down city council for the next two weeks?
Yeah, they are not.
While the elections take place, say yay.
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 Again, and you're not, um, Mr. Turnbull, was that a yay? I, I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, we have a unanimous decision. Um, city council will be adjourned for the next two weeks. As, um, elections will take place. The first four, um, elected will be appointed at that time. And the next four from the election will be appointed two weeks after. Um, city council will resume when there are all duly elected members in their seats.
Mr. Man, I have a question, um, last week it was brought up that maybe we should have people not be able to. people not be able to uh run for city council if they have been here z- not, le- less than fourteen days. Is that what the uh proposal was or?
Thirty days.
Single's thirty days.
Okay, so I don't know. Are we gonna do that or?
I do not believe that that has fully gone through review by council and since um currently under everybody deciding to stand down as council for the elections to happen, uh we would have to wait till after that time when we have a full council to vote on that.
All right, okay.
Yeah, and and like, like Polly said, um, I'm ecstatic that that people wanna run and show an interest. And yeah, I I don't think we should have that fourteen day thing right now because there's people I've never seen out there, out there, and uh they're showing an interest in, and yeah, let's, yeah, please, run, run.
Yeah, run. Show up.
So all in favor of returning city council until said time of um the first election for members to be present and accounted for, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry, had to.
Aye.
Okay, city council is adjourned until appointments are completed. Or, excuse me, elections are completed.
Yay.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
Now you can say it. Now you can say yay.
Yay.
Good job.
Get me the fuck out of here.
I know. Fuck this. I mean, I stepped up because no other fuckers would, and then they're bitches.
Oh my god, I'm a nuisance to size. I see it. Oh, here she is.
City council dismissed, I guess.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Hello, Savannah.
Well, hello, Mrs. Mayor.
Let's uh, let's go in front and see what the hell was going on.